Great, thanks. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to council Monday, April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Call me at four P M. Reminders, turn off your mobile device, put on my vibrator, please. Any additions or additions to the agenda this evening? I have a motion here. The council by hereby accepts the agenda from Monday, twenty eighth, and break me a council is survey amended, move by. As a balance, but council, no additions. All in favor? Very thank you. Any declarations of interest tonight? Hearing none, I have a motion here for the previous meeting of council. Have the council minutes be adopted as the regular meeting council were held on Monday, March twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, so amended, move by. That's where we're second by council balance. Any questions, errors, revisions to those minutes? Hearing none, call a question on favor? Very thank you. We're ready into the council reports. We, few of us attended the Noma A G M last week at Thunder Bay. So we'll start off, how about we start off with our councillor, student councillor, councillor Anthony, please?
All right, so it was a great conference learning the ins and outs of Northern Ontario politics, I believe. I will highlight a few things that I participated in. Me and councillor Lake attended a presentation by Chantel Bryson that kind of outlined A I and how it's going to impact municipalities in the future. And I thought there was a few important takeaways from your presentation, and it was a great presentation to see the future of municipalities with A I and how we work with A I and basically just A I. Next, that being able to meet with Minister Cho and Minister Flack alongside M D P Holland with you, C O Scorchinski and councillor Mattos was a great experience to talk about the A L C and all the fun stuff that's going on there and being able to advocate personally on behalf of the town to drill into their brains how they can attract us back into our northern communities and bring us home.
Awesome. Thank you, councillor Juliano.
First to say Marathon was really well represented at Noma, both by the new chair of of Noma, but also our student reps and Gerald's presentation on town. So really appreciate it. A couple of sort of things that I think we might want to know about or follow up on. One was with related in Chamber of Commerce presentation last week. Last meeting, I was able to have a conversation with the Ontario immigrant nominee program, and this is for employers who are trying to assist employees in staying in the community. It's exactly what the chamber was looking for. I forwarded that information to them, but it's an Ontario organization, so it's not a federal immigration thing, but what it means is is that if they're recommended by their employer, they get an additional six hundred points on their citizen super application. And there's a certain like it's like they've been indebted already by the province, so the chamber has that information and they can follow up on it if they wish. The other is that we've talked a little bit, or I have, about energy guide assistance, met with Enbridge. The grants are now up to ten thousand dollars on heat pumps and those kind of things. And I don't know whether, you know, we had talked a little bit about whether we as a town could assist people going through that process. I looked at the websites. It's pretty good, and I have a contact at Enbridge if anyone's interested. I met with the, briefly with Dr. Andrew Dean, who is the Vice President of Research and Innovation at Lakehead. And he was just explaining some of the projects that they partnered with municipalities on. If there's anything we decided we want to try something new, where can we get some research done, that kind of thing. And the last one is Quest, Net Zero Communities Accelerator Program is coming to Ontario. It hasn't been in Ontario yet. But points out municipalities have directed the direct control of fifty-one percent of their communities' energy emissions. And their work with communities to look at how we can manage energy emissions. Right now, they're working with forty-six municipalities in four Atlantic provinces and three British provinces. And they'll be coming to Ontario in two thousand and twenty-five. So I thought those were ones that might relate to us.
Good. Thank you, councillor Lake.
I think the first thing that about this particular novel is I was very proud of our student councillors, again, thought they spoke very well in their presentation and I really would like to say that I think what was successful this year about that about that program is that our student councillor had a co-op in municipality where they saw different elements of governance, and I feel like that was really a good way to model that program forward. Again, I'm disappointed that only Red Lake had a student council program. I feel like everybody should have one. But I do feel like not only are we the longest running one now, we're actually improving it as we go, so feel like that program's in a nice place for the next couple of years. Like councillor Juliano, I did some, one place in the trade show that was interesting, and I forgot the information package was the official plan housing for people with disabilities, making sure they're included when it comes to housing. It was really interesting to talk to the woman who was there about what do folks with disabilities do in the community, especially as their parents age or you know, the idea of moving to, it used to be Geraldton or Nipigon, and what are we doing as a municipality for that particular segment, especially in terms of our housing bylaws and N R P. So I thought that was an interesting thing to maybe have as a discussion if we get into official plans and strategies as a, as a group of people we don't often think about, but certainly in terms of housing or support. So I appreciated she actually recognized the student councillors. It said, you brought student councillors last year and said, nobody in Ontario has yet brought that into the planning end. But that, that's something she's advocating for. I thought that's a, that's a pretty positive thing to bring back. Those are the two I had.
C O Scorchinski?
Oh, yeah, thanks, worship. As councillor Juliano mentioned, we did have lots of information requests for our tiny homes presentation for a lot of the municipalities. So that was well received and housing was was shared across a number of presentations. But from an administrative perspective, I always host Northwest Ontario C A Os meeting the day before Noma. Once again, we got together as colleagues and just a rundown of the agenda. We had an opportunity to meet with Michelle Salo, the president of Confederation College. Just touch base on some of the challenges that the college faces going forward, which may ultimately impact our Marathon campus. And Michelle, of course, also made the presentation at the Noma Conference. Strong mayor powers and council relations. It was a hot topic with the exception of us because we're under the seven council member threshold. But there's certainly a lot of discussion around that item, not just at the council tables, also at the C A O manager levels. We talked about risk management and insurance, which is always a topic of interest for everybody. Alternative revenue generation and cost sharing, airports and funding. And we're, you know, we're in the same boat particularly like Dryden and like Greystone, where, you know, our airport is reaching its useful life from a runway perspective. The A cap dollars at the federal level have been cut back and how do we fund airports going forward to do a runway which could run north of seven million to eight million dollars. We talked about the challenges around recruitment and retention, which is of course a major issue. We're very fortunate right now that we have a full team, so I stayed fairly quiet on that one. We talked about union contracts and particularly around what is this uncertainty around the economy going to mean going forward? In terms of union contracts and requested increases. And then our final topic of the day was talking about procurement and buying Canadian, not necessarily from a policy perspective, but just as anybody started to see the impacts of that. And the general answer was not yet. Because most of us have our tenders out right now for any construction work we're planning to do. And we're certainly going to see them in the next month or so when those tenders come in or some, I think, the uncertainty around supply chain. So as always, it was a great meeting to get together with fellow colleagues and talk about not just council matters, but administrative matters as well.
Great, thanks. And I won't highlight over the whole agenda. I mean, it was a great agenda, very well organized. We struggled a bit because we were in transition with Noma right now. There was a few verbs along the way. We addressed those with individuals that were affected, but we had great discussions, great presentations by individuals throughout the conference. I think everybody was pleased. Of course, we really do get a lot of traction because of our student council. I want to thank both student councils because they did an amazing speech up there, talked about the impact they received from working with our government this year and going through the ideas, specifically talking about how the impact is regulations, governance, governance models, all that. I think it was bang on. And I think you guys talked to a lot of individuals, both you and councillor Mateos, around how your impact was and how is that looking forward. Councillor Lake made a fair point. We've been bringing this program and not necessarily our students, but we did bring the first set of students with us to Thunder Bay to the Verpist session. And we, we were recognized in two thousand and eleven that, wow, this is a great program, but yet municipalities don't put the effort, take traction. We're thankful that we got councillor Lake as a teacher makes it a little easier. But if councillor Lake wasn't at the school, we would have to, C A O Scorchinski, myself, go to the school to talk to the grade ten, eleven civic students and say, listen, get involved, right? So that's how we started off and we continue. But it makes it easier, obviously, if we have councillor Lake. So we thank you for that. But reality is, it's the youth engagement that we need to have. And we talked about Gen Zs. Well, they're Gen Zs. We need those Gen Zs to understand how governance works and how the models will work in the future so that they can look after us when they're governing municipalities and cities and provinces and country. So that was very interesting. I mean, obviously, I got appointed as mayor, sorry, from my mayor group in my as to, it's a, it's a changeover of title, obviously, as president of the Noma. So I'm looking forward to next year's, and it'll bring me back to the A M O board as well. And of course, there was A M O delegates there from, from the A M O board. We invited up in Roma as well. Christine Larry was there from as the chair of Roma. Roma works closely with Noma and Phenom. Danny Whelan was there, right, president of Phenom. So a lot of interconnection with governance. And then, of course, we had the many ministers there. And I mean, that was a great session, and our student councillors asked the ministers of those of those questions as well, got recognized. But the reality is, you can see that when you have eight, nine ministers coming to Thunder Bay. And thank Minister Holland for inviting them up, and they, they come up and participated in Noma. But understanding the North, and I think you could listen to every one of the answers from those ministers. It was that Northern Ontario, specifically Northwest Ontario, is the future economic engine of Ontario, and we're going to be able to supply. So with that being said, they recognize the importance of us through the energy, the mining, the critical minerals, those are the engines that's going to get Ontario to the next level, and we're part of that. So we made it clear, we, we, I myself and C A O Scorchinski have made that clear with our vision of Marathon with the E L C, as well as the Generation Mighty Project. And the energy that we just tied in with East West Side, that we have the availability. So everything's working in our favor. We just got to get everyone to understand. They talk about red tape reduction and speeding up the process. We've heard it loud and clear from ministers. But we have to see the results of that, actually implementation of that, so that we can reduce those timelines and get things going. Overall, great, great conference, great benefits for our community. And by having those individuals, such as those ministers, talking about our youth councillors and our ideas and having those meetings, we're well on the radar. We're very thoroughly on the radar. We just need to see some of the results from being on the radar. And hopefully, we'll continue to get some traction. And the best of luck to the candidates tonight, that we, we had them come and do a candidate's overview for five minutes each. And so they did great. And, you know, everybody's got to get up, vote. Hopefully, everybody in our community gets out and exercises their democracy and their right to vote. And, and we, we have great results out of that going forward. We have a candidate stronger, a province as stronger, and we can be beneficial of that. So overall, great conference, and I think well worth our attendance and our, our student councillors for sure there. One thing came out too, is I think councillor, he's going to talk a bit about it as a session tomorrow, is the ministry now is looking at rural, the ministry of Rural Affairs reached out to us through the municipality, through administration, myself, to have our students go and engage now and talk to other students and people within the community. So councillor Mateos and councillor Hensler are going tomorrow to Manitowoc. I don't know if you could chat up with that if you either want to take your center, so I'll leave it be. But that's, that's a huge bonus for us as leaders to show that we're going now to teach other people about, not just this program, but youth engagement. So thanks for that. And again, it was really good. Anybody got any questions? No, all good. Thank you. Student council report.
Oh, wow, thank you. For him again. All right. Good afternoon, council. It has been a while since we have last seen each other, so I'm going to do a quick wrap of badminton season. It has come to an end for all but three athletes at Marathon High School. Marathon High School performed admirably at the N triple S double A semifinals in Nipigon with twenty and thirty-two athletes having advanced to the finals of Terrace Bay two weeks ago. At Terrace Bay, the seniors demonstrated exceptional skill led by K O Lake, Willow Boilo and Brody Pittman, who secured first place in boy singles and mixed doubles. Their impressive performances continued at Wassa, where Lake triumphed in the boy singles competition and Boilo and Pittman, the Boilo and Pittman duo finished in second place, earning spots at Opsa and Holton later this week. Soccer teams are continuing their practices and preparing for N triple S semifinals on May fifteenth here in Marathon and are eager to get on the pitch as soon as possible. Thursday evening, Thunder Eric Gallery opened a student art gallery, including ten pieces for Marathon High School students. It's great to see work of our students in the North be recognized regionally in this way. On Friday, Marathon High School welcomed twenty-two different vendors and future M H S students into the gym for a day of fun and learning. It looked, it looked like a great day from all the pictures. I want to thank all the vendors for their support of the youth in preparing them for high school and their return in the future. There is a vaccination clinic on April thirtieth at Marathon High School. Important to get out if you haven't already. If you're hearing this and not, and have not voted yet, please listen to the remainder of the meeting, have dinner, and make sure to cast your vote. During my conversations with candidates at Noma last week, they all emphasized the importance of getting out to vote. Carrying on this evening, I will be on C F N O once again with my great friend Al Creswell, discussing the results in our rating, Thunder Bay Superior North, and the newly combined rating of Sue St. Mary Algoma to our east. I look forward to ushering in a new government and reflecting on the turnout of the campaigns over the last thirty-seven days. Lastly, it's a quick recovery from the hangover of Noma. Tomorrow, I will be heading up to the Teeny Tiny Summit hosted in Manitowoc. I look forward to amplifying our youth voice marathon to business owners and local politicians from Manitowoc and other communities so our activism can spread throughout the North Shore and Northern Ontario. It was a key component of what Rural Affairs Minister Lee Sed Thompson had said to the three of us the other day is that we really need to empower youth voice and things like this, and possibilities like this are one in a million, and we need to take advantage of them. So I thank the minister and Chloe for the opportunity to head up there and be able to speak to the summit.
Thank you very much, and I know you will do a great job in regards to that. And you and councillor Mateos will bring us proud recognition for the program and not just after your roles as student councillors. So thanks for that. Any questions? Hearing none. I go right to C O report, report on Marathon Cemetery Natural Green Burials, Mr. Scorchinski.
In two thousand and eight, the town of Marathon hired a consultant to prepare a Marathon Cemetery expansion master plan, which included a development of a column barium area as well as additional in-ground traditional grave plots. Marathon Cemetery currently has seven hundred and eighty-four total plots with eighty-two reserved, dead unused, and fifty-six available for purchase. One full burial and four cremations can be placed in a single plot. Administration has been asked to research the concept of natural burials and the process to include this practice in the Marathon Cemetery. A natural burial, also known as a green burial, simply refers to the return of a body to the earth with as minimal an impact on the environment as possible. Currently in Ontario, there are approximately ten cemeteries with this option available, all located in Southern Ontario. Key tenants of a natural burial are: the body is not embalmed, the body is placed in either a natural biodegradable casket or shroud. The casket or shrouds placed directly into the earth without a concrete line or vault, and the site is left to its natural indigenous state versus being landscaped. There are currently no funeral homes in the region who offer the services or products required to meet the tenants of a natural burial. Due to the absence of embalming or volume preservation in this practice, the recommended timeframe from death to interment is typically within seventy-two hours or less. A cemetery expansion is not in the two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-six corporate strategic plan. Further exploration, including community consultation, discussions of local service providers, and assessment of cemetery expansionary and costs would be required to determine the possibility of offering the service at the Marathon Cemetery. Financially, no financial costing or requirements for implementing natural burials at the Marathon Cemetery have been researched as part of this report. And administration is presenting this report for information purposes for council and any further direction on a go-forward basis.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Councillor Juliano?
Is this the time?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I didn't know whether I had to wait till it was an option.
No, no motion, just information.
Okay, so I, I brought this forward, and I wanted to say a little bit more about it. So there are actually fourteen certified ones in Ontario. There's quite a few more than that that aren't certified by the organization. Does that's kind of like, you know, getting a green forest certification. You may be functioning that way, but don't have a certification. So there are a lot more than that. And I guess I wanted to say a little bit more about why it might be a good idea. First of all, more Canadians are considering their environmental footprint. And it's only natural that we're going to start thinking about how we make our final arrangements. Religious and spiritual practices around death vary in different cultures. For example, Orthodox Jews require to be buried within twenty-four hours of dying and never embalmed. As Marathonians, we come, becoming, we are becoming more ethnically diverse, expanding burial options seems like a good idea. Historically, family and friends or local volunteers prepared the deceased burial, deceased for burial without assistance of a funeral home. It continues to be a significant part of the burial ritual in some communities, including in many remote indigenous territories. And as recently as forty to fifty years ago, it was a practice at Biggie Gone. And when I arrived here, it wasn't unusual for people to prepare the body of their loved one on their own. For funeral homes, it's simply a matter of doing less, not more. They just take care of transportation, care of the deceased. Providing and providing it that biodegradable container, which you can get outside of a funeral home, anywhere, cardboard or pine without finishes. Anyway, and I think if funeral homes in our area, if it's available and people are asking about it, are going to get those products. Carbon footprint for its cremation is equal to driving a car nine hundred and eighty kilometers or five hundred and thirty pounds of C O two. Traditional cemeteries cost more to maintain, require more landscaping, and they work against the health and growth of natural species. Given the expansion of the Marathon Cemetery, it is an ideal time to look at the future to designate a small strip or section nearest the forest for green slash natural burials. And I'll add that we can have a natural burial anytime. Like, if I want to be buried in a shroud, like, there's nothing that prohibits that in our existing cemetery. The question is, can we put it somewhere near the edge that we can just let the forest grow in a little bit when we have it? And so I will have an alternate motion. If, if this is the time to name it, I will, or if it's later, I'll be there.
Yeah, thanks, mate. What we'll have to do is, with this information, we'll have the administration to investigate. We can bring back a motion, so we want them to actually investigate as part of the expansion, and that would be mapped out. And then administration will have to look at an area within the, it's going to go back towards.
Well, let me, let me just say, you should then just, just to point out how, like, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we carve out an order of the cemetery. What I'm suggesting is we reserve seven plots or six plots along the border of the cemetery and see how it goes.
Right.
And if, if they sell, then we can expand that. If they don't, they can be turned back in. We have fifty-six left, six out of that number. That's not a lot.
Right. That, that area is all landscaped, so it would have to be a new section that we're going to develop going back towards the bush line now. So there'd be someone under the plant that's existing that we looked at in two thousand and eight, just to look at that and see what the expansion requires for the column barium and/or a portion of that that would be looked at by council.
Can I just, just say respectfully that it wouldn't be, like, it could be the landscape part. It would just be that you would can stop cutting the grass.
Right.
You know, that, that would be the basic impact.
So councillor Juliano, the problem with that is that when you have a section like that where people expect it to be landscaped, completely, right now, it'd be almost better to be in the expansion part, that you can leave it on a bush line, and that would be permanently rusting with no markers, no nothing, right? I'm assuming there'd be no markers there either.
There's a central marker for, that's shared by whoever.
I, I've seen them on T V through programs, but I just haven't been to one. But I know what you're saying. It has to be buried on a tree, and it's like, you know, leave.
No, no.
No, no. People choose that because they want it to be natural and all that. But if it's necessary, if we go and identify those six or eight plots within the existing cemetery, and it's landscaped, and all of a sudden you let that all become natural within that block that's been maintained for years, and we hear it all the time from our residents that it's not being properly cut. There's, there's dips, the, the casket has rotten, and there's a hole in the ground, stuff like that, right?
So this is why I mentioned that it should go right along the edge. So it just essentially would look like the forest that's growing in seventeen.
So can we ask you to maybe work with the C O and public works manager and kind of look at that? Maybe there could be something brought back for discussion?
Yeah, we'll need to bring a report back regardless. This would be a new fee in fees and charges that we would have to get council approval for. So I think, you know, looking at the timeframe of the end of April, I think, you know, we generally do our strategic planning with council in kind of mid-October to late October, which leads into our budget and to our fees and charges. So bringing back a report, working with councillor Juliano on the show makes sense. That sounds fine. And just to say that it should cost us less, not, I mean, given that there's nothing you have to do.
But in terms of proper identifying those plots, that's not affecting the existing landscape's part. So I know we run into a conflict there. No doubt about it. But if it's something that's on the edge of the road, on the other side of the road now, where it's not, it's not been landscaped.
Well, that's what I mean, that, the new, beyond, the new part.
Okay, yeah, perfect. Because I think on this side where it's always been traditionally landscaped and cut and groomed.
Oh, yeah. There's people buried there.
And they expect that as well. Sorry, councillor Lake.
We all, we own all the land, other than that, right? That's not. Do you own all that property? Great.
So that, that's not fair that councillor Juliano could.
Yeah, that works, that works well for us. And then we'll bring a closer report back to council for deliberation and any further direction from a budget.
I think we fully support giving options to the residents.
I can promise three will some.
Perfect.
Are you planning to do your thing?
Well, the plan is, we were talking before the council, taking my TV, about the boomers, we're all, you know, councillor Juliano, I, myself, for the boomers, and the rest of us are different, you know, Gen Zs, Gen Xs, and millennials. So it's an interesting.
Boomers, boomers are starting to ask, what's my legacy? And, and we've totally messed up a lot of the environmental thing and going down green is the little thing from boss to exit.
Perfect. So we'll have you work with administration and maybe have a report back back in a couple of months in regards to the strategic planning process. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, administration report for our twenty-five operating capital budgets.
Mr. Buber, good day.
Good day, Mayor and Council. The draft two thousand and twenty-five operating capital budget was presented at a special meeting of council on January twenty eighth. Since that time, the council's input as well as additional information and details have been incorporated into the budget. The overall objective of the two thousand and twenty-five budget is to maintain current levels of goods and services while keeping any increase to the tax levy to a minimum. Due to the pandemic, the province has deferred reassessment. Property values in this tax year are the current value assessment value as of January first, two thousand and sixteen. There are no changes from the two thousand and twenty-four property values other than supplemental omitted and reduced notices from impact that occurred during last year. The overall assessment excluding the exempt properties has increased by two point zero one percent. The decrease to the residential class, which makes up sixty-nine of the total assessment, was point ten percent of the sorry, it is point ten percent. Significant increases were recognized with the new multi-residential complexes and the new motel in the commercial class. Mine class increased by four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars with the updated employee allocation on the unload line property. The budget being presented today contains a bundle of programs and services that our council has agreed will be delivered to residents during two thousand and twenty-five. As listed in Schedule A, operating requirements are five million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. In addition to the programs and services, one point three million dollars of capital work is contained in this budget. Grants, debt, and reserves will fund the majority of the work, but a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars will be paid from the tax levy. The province has set the educational levy for the various classes. The combined levy to be collected on behalf of the various school boards is estimated to be four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. The tax levy, six million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is a seven point four percent increase from two thousand and twenty-four. There's a total taxes to be collected. So to break down the totals by class, the residential class will see an increase of four point six three, sorry, four point six three percent property tax. Multi-residential, an increase of twenty-five percent. Three, sorry, four point six three percent property tax, multi-residential, an increase of twenty-five percent because of the two new. Multi-res complexes. Commercial will see an increase of ten percent. Industrial class will see an increase of eight percent. Overall, there's an increase of seven point one percent of total property taxes. With the exception of the new aggregate tax classes, each property will have an increase of five percent to their municipal tax rate. But considering no change to the educational levy, the total rate increase will be four point five percent. That averages a hundred and twenty-nine for residents. Managers have reviewed everything and we've been shaving nickels and dimes throughout. But in this report, I'm detailing major changes since the twenty, January twenty eighth meeting. So Workplace Safety and Insurance Board has provided a sixty-nine thousand dollar payment as a surplus distribution. The credit is allocated. Between administration, public works, and recreation based on the labor costs from twenty twenty-three. Actual insurance premiums are eighteen thousand dollars higher, with the exception of insuring Peninsula Manor, which I'll discuss later. Twenty thousand dollars has been reduced from training and travel in all departments. Fire department has reduced their equipment purchases and programming by nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And tax levy is reduced by thirteen thousand dollars with higher building permit revenue budget. Combination of all the equipment maintenance resulted in eight thousand dollar savings. By having employees doing some of the electrical relocation at the sewage treatment plant, their labor costs of thirty-eight thousand dollars will be funded by the water and sewer reserve. Instead of being on the tax levy. There's a thirty-four thousand dollars reduction in the amount of insurance for Peninsula Manor with the new provider. We've managed to get a third party to provide fifteen thousand dollar donation to assist with position recruitment and retention. Designing the Active Living Centre is estimated to cost three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. All of this is funded by a demand loan from TD. Their trust. But the funding lobbying is to be paid with the tax levy. The budget assumes thirty-five thousand dollars this year. Supplies for parks, which go from green spaces to Penlay Campground, is reduced by fourteen thousand dollars. One major piece of equipment not being purchased is the new snowplow. The levy is reduced by fourteen thousand dollars with estimated increase of golf revenue. And lower seed and fertilizer costs of four thousand dollars and lower green supplies of four thousand dollars have been budgeted. Port Authority Activities will be funded by its partners, which is the Town Marathon and Big Bagon, not the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation. This will mean less grant revenue, so five thousand dollars is added. We only have eight capital projects, so I want to reiterate that not including in the budget is the construction of the tiny home subdivision. The Active Living Centre or repaying the three million dollar demand loan for producing the construction documents for the Active Living Centre. Revenue from the sale of Gulf Trail permits usually go to reserves, but we decided not to do that. That's a reduction of fifteen thousand dollars. And a significant portion, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of the taxation from the assessment goal will go to the capital. For the working capital reserve to cover a portion of the deficits from twenty twenty-two, which was fifty-four thousand dollar deficit. Twenty twenty-three, which was a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit. So the options are approve the budget as presented or approve the twenty twenty-five operating and capital budgets made up of amendments. Administration recommends that option A be approved and that by law, twenty-one hundred adopting budget be approved as presented.
Thank you for the report. I have a motion here that council here by accepts the attachment for revision of twenty twenty-five operating capital budgets approved, probably while it be adopted. Later in this meeting, approving the twenty-five operating capital budget. Bye. I just like second by counsel. Questions? Counselor Lake?
Yeah, I mean, I'll start. There was lots of numbers in there. There's only one that residents care about, which is if I'm a resident, what is my tax going on?
One twenty-nine, one twenty-nine on average.
So it's a hundred and twenty-nine dollars each. I can see and I appreciate. That you listed all the places where administration has shaved everything. I feel like it's like a hot air balloon where you're throwing stuff up to like keep afloat. The, I'm assuming that the reason we're we're having those listed up is to say like we have stripped this down to the bone. So the the final number for residents is a hundred and twenty-nine dollars and that includes.
That's the average.
That's the average.
So the average, average of all the residents is a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per property.
Okay, and that's a, that's a nice to have that number in mind. And that includes getting us to the point of all the Active Living Centre prep work done.
But the Active Living Centre we're getting done is paid by, it's not on a tax levy. We're going into debt or we have a demand loan. We're paying the interest fees on the demand loan, but next year's budget twenty twenty-six that will be in the venture has to be paid back and that catches Squirtz.
Yeah, so as as the treasurer has indicated, the Active Living Centre and tiny homes are not included in the current budget for two reasons. They're open tenders right now. So once those tenders close, they'll be coming back to council for final approvals. Or administration will bring back further reporting on next steps if they don't meet the requirements of the tender or they come in over budget. So. At this point in time, we could not put those in the budget, but they will, they will be dealt with in obviously open session when those tender flows are brought back to council.
There is a thirty-five thousand dollar being there for the lobbying efforts for the. So that's built into the budget? Other than that, no. So. Everything else, anything else, man? Everybody else, counsel else?
Yeah, Mr. Squirtz, we had a conversation a couple of months back just regarding the mat tax. And if there was any other opportunities of kind of getting more revenue from the taxation in the mat tax. On Uber, Skip the Dish, those kind of things coming into community. And if we could take advantage of those within the mat tax, is that the case? Is that something we could potentially look for moving forward in the next budget? And then with that being said, to the increased cost of insurance. We've been seeing the insurance rates just continuously increase. What do we lobby in order to say like enough is enough? Something's got to give. Is that the insurance? Businesses themselves or provincial governments? Who would we make the case to to say like? Something's got to give.
Yeah, so so question number one, you know, and we kind of had this, you know, discussion before we were in open session. Really, the only way to generate new revenue within our budget is growth. You know, as as the treasurer indicated, you know, we captured new assessive this year in multi-res, but we need to see our population grow. You know, we need a project like gen mining, you know, where we have new people and new residents and new residential construction. Other than that, this is going to be the challenge year over year because the gap is widening from both an operating and capital perspective. And we're not bringing in any new revenue. So growth is the answer. And, you know, as for our strategic plan, a lot of our plan is based on growth. You know, we're looking at tiny homes. We have a hundred and five unit subdivision. We're looking at the Active Living Centre to attract people. So that really is how we're going to generate, you know, new taxation, specifically from a mat tax as an example. We add more hotel rooms, we'll generate more revenues.
The only other thing there in regards to the new generation of money's growth is if you don't, then next year you start looking at reduced services or you continue running seven, eight, nine percent tax increases, period.
Just to add on to that, is there anything in addition that we could be doing within the mat tax outside of just the accommodation piece? Or is that pretty much the?
Yeah, we're, we're at six percent, which is on the higher end in Ontario.
And it's only based on hotel rooms, correct?
It's based on, it's based on stays under thirty days. So Airbnb's under thirty days have to report. So I think we're, we're doing a better job of capturing.
Do campgrounds count under?
They, they do.
I don't know. No, campgrounds are not included in in our map.
If you had a private campground, no?
Private.
Private, yes, but the Penley is not. As an example. Okay, we get all that. But but we are doing a much better job of, there, there's no requirement in Ontario to register, right, as Airbnb. Right? It's easy for hotels, right? You just drive by and you see how many people are in a hotel and, you know, whether they're reporting accurately or not in a small town. Airbnb is much more challenging. But we are much more progressive and we do have the teeth in the bylaw. If we see a Facebook post as an example, somebody advertising Airbnb in less than thirty days and they're not reporting, we're following it up. Because there is a legal requirement to do that. So we're slowly doing that. And that's also coming with our change in our bylaw structure where we have more resources to look at that. So. You know, I think we can capture, but ultimately the the answer to question one is growth. Question two. The challenge and and Americans certainly highlight this from an AMO perspective is in Ontario, we have joint and southern liability. Right? Which is a terrible model when it comes to keeping insurance premiums down. So really what it means is the deepest pockets. Whether they have to pay or not, are always charged in a lawsuit. So as an example, there's an accident on Highway seventeen within our municipal boundary, we automatically get noticed that we're being named. In a lawsuit that we have to defend. Of course, we get taken out once we defend that, but it costs money to do that. Right? So, you know, I I know this has been on the AMO table for a long time. I don't get the sense the province wants to tackle it. But it really is the the model we have in Ontario that is the challenge.
Absolutely. We've been at this probably five years through the AMO Noma slash FADOM Roma. Because it affects everybody in Ontario and all of our rates have gone up dramatically over the years. And I think everybody who's listening at home can also reflect on the fact that they have a halftime, whether it's a Ford or Dodge, their rates have gone up dramatically in the last two years. And you can shop around all you want. Doesn't matter. It's going to be the same because the depth of vehicles is high and we're working on that too. So it is reality, right?
And we did go to a new provider because their increase or the new provider's increase was substantially lower than the our. Previous provider was quoting, right?
Yeah, I was going to name that, but it is good to periodically check your provider because it did save a lot on on the manner in terms of the insurance. Absolutely grateful for that. A question I have is when you say about the only way to increase funds is to grow. Are you talking about? Businesses or people?
Both.
Or either or. Okay, because we're, we're, we do tend to aim for that the big whale, you know, like you want to land the mine and we do, we're going to have a party, but. I'm noticing that there's a growth happening quietly and in smaller numbers in the community of people coming, not only for retirement, but. This kind of bring your family thing here going on. I, I'm sure everyone in this room knows someone who. Moved here and then said, this is great. And they came along and they came along and it's provided nurses at the hospital, it's provided. And I just wonder if there's a way to. You know, maybe it's through communications or something to to spread that word that it's a good place to live with your family. And if if they're buying houses and doing that kind of thing.
Careful what you wish for, because that will be a political hot potato when the province finally resumes reassessment. Because, again, they say the typical house in here is worth ninety thousand dollars, but nothing is selling for ninety thousand dollars. And I would say now. Most of this or most houses are selling between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred. And so that's where you're going to see your taxship going on.
Yeah, so that's my, that's my question is, is it a good thing to promote or or no?
Sure it is. So if you look at the the hundred and five lot subdivision, if we fill it up, generation announced tomorrow, we build a hundred and five, now we developer build a hundred and five home. Let's say the average home up there is five thousand dollars. Well, that's, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars in new tax revenue. Tiny homes, maybe the value is fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars tax, or twenty, that's sixty thousand dollars. Know what I mean? Those numbers add up pretty quickly, but also then it drives other commercial sectors in regards to the entrepreneur coming to town, opening up something, building something. Hotel. So all that growth spurs more revenue. Other than that, you know, no, no other revenue.
Yeah, and on the residential side, the important thing to note is, you know, more houses means more people.
Right.
Which means more assessment, but it also means more people using recreation facilities.
Yeah.
Right? More people, you know, buying groceries, buying golf memberships. So, you know, that's, you know, why the growth is such an important piece. Having new people is great. But, you know, based on the taxation system in Ontario, right, generating revenue was based on new properties or expansion of property. So more people doesn't necessarily equal generating more revenue.
Right.
Well, and I know the communities like Manitowage and. Or Sudbury, just been hearing mining. Elliott Lake. They, they focused on retired people. And that that ran into a bit of a problem because there was high demand to services and low demand of volunteers. And so, you know, you want to think about how you do that, but if that is part of the equation, you might want to think about building that more into our.
So counsel Julian, I at the time I knew that the mayor of Elliott Lake and Elliott Lake did it right. I'm not going to be critical of Manitowage time. They didn't do it. They, they focused on selling the homes. Attracting people to move to the community, but they need service to be provided for those individuals. Where Elliott Lake took this, said, we're going to become a senior community. We're going to apply the service of low-impact sporting activities, healthcare activities. And yet, and Elliott Lake has grown from the time of the mine shutdown to now because all those other young people are coming to service those old people as boomers. And they're bringing their families, having kids, the schools are being repubished. So it works out based on how you promote.
Just a quick question too. Is there a strong correlation between assessment and insurance? So if we get reassessed, insurance should, you would think if we go down or. It's going to go up, popping up.
I would say the biggest thing, which now that we have an election, is climate change, where your insurance companies are having. Several years of having to pay for forest fires and flooding and ice storms and. Tornadoes in Ontario type, I think.
Counselor Lake?
Yeah, and just going back to trying to think again. From a, just maybe two questions and and we say we just met with the other CEOs region. So where would this tax increase kind of fit regionally? And two, historically, where is this in terms of the kind of, like, we've always tried to keep this, we've always been, obviously doing that again, but. Just kind of historically, where are we and regionally, how are we?
This is, this is my sixteenth budget or seventeenth budget. And historically, when I came, it was zero percent increase or two percent increase. And then came the whole asset management thing where you've got stuff that is deteriorating and you've got to actually start putting money. Either do the work or set it aside. So when you have enough, you have to actually do the work. So last year, I think it was a three percent increase and this year it's five percent. Before the whole Trump type of thing, most communities in Ontario were seeing between five percent to ten percent. There are even a few municipalities that have gone up to fifty percent, it's crazy type of thing.
My context, because it's ketchup.
Yeah, that context is important.
Yeah, from a regional perspective, you know, four and a half to nine, I would say, is the average for northwestern Ontario. And a lot of it, you know, from an operating expense perspective is based on uncontrollables. You know, we control, as you can see from the notes from the treasurer, anything that we can control, we're bringing in on budget or under or reducing it. It's, you know, your insurances, you know, cybersecurity, you know, the whole, you know, the cost of, you know, salt going up, the cost of fertilizer going up driven by the global economy. Right? So it's, it's a very, you know, going forward, it's very challenging to manage budgets when there's not new money.
Absolutely. And seventeen years, I've been around thirty-one. We've, we've gone through ups and downs and highs and lows and hell and back. Reality is, you know what? We can cut services and the residents will be reflective of that quickly. We'll continue to maintain services and the average one was going to pay a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. A year increased with the same service provided the year before. So I think it's a reasonable amount to consider in taxation. The assessment part will be a little wonky as we talked before the council may start. That'll all be education around the assessment, the ratios and all that. So we know we're going to be reassessed and those homes will be reflected, but their tax is not going to triple. We've had that conversation before. So how do we look at the reassessment values and then the ratios that's being applied to those homes? We need, as you can see in the budget, six million dollars. And about another million or two in capital based on, you know, grants from government gas tax, the the North's funding, the unfunding, all those various things that are assisting us as well to the residents' community. That if we weren't getting those funds from provincial federal governments, we'd be looking at funding another three plus three and a half million dollars in our budget. So we have to work with what we got in this. As you heard from the CEO and the treasurer, we're doing the best we can without cutting services.
Very exciting.
Cut, cut, or or maintain and and start looking at how we can generate, as you heard, more growth. We're working on that. We just got to get, we can't create mines. We can only support their their benefit and support their their development through the process. But we need them as an individual corporate citizen to be responsible and build that sooner than later. Hopefully, the market reflects that. It's not about them either. It's about the market. Right? When we first got excited about the Platinum Plain and Cover Mine, platinum was three thousand dollars now. So I think today, platinum is running around a thousand now. US big difference. Whereas gold was twelve hundred dollars now since then. And now gold's at thirty-five or whatever US announced. So it's a big difference. So. We're not in bad shape. I think a reasonable uh, four and a half to five percent increase with this market and this uh, this uh, process, this shares is reasonable. If anybody has a complaint, uh, reach out and contact the treasurer. With all that being said, thank you very much for that. A lot of hard work. I thank administration for doing the best they can. Or putting that budget together and we'll continue to work on, underestimate dollar value to the residents of our community. And don't forget, we all pay taxes as well and we all drive over the same bottles. We all use the same services. So uh, reflective of that and people can meet us up on the social media aspect, just reach out to any one of us and get the actual information and we'll share that with you. You'll have the facts. With that being said, a quick question on the bureau. Thank you very much.
And there are hardly any protocols. The same.
I think of speed reduction.
Um, up next we have a report on the investment policy.
Financial policy, eleven state secret treasurer shall provide an annual investment report that details the status of the current investment portfolio and the transactions made since our last report. The report shall contain a statement about the performance of the investments. Statement by the treasurer as to whether or not, in his opinion, all investments were made in according with policies and goals adopted by the municipality. Any, sorry, any such other information, I can, counsel may require. Twenty twenty-three bank interest was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. TD's rate increased from four point six to five point five percent in December. One investment pays zero point one six five percent higher interest. Term deposit interest was two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars and realized income in the one investment was sixty-two thousand dollars. There were no purchases or redemptions made in twenty twenty-three. Last year, bank interest was ninety-three thousand dollars. TD's general interest rate gradually decreased from a high of four, uh, sorry, five point five to, down to four point two seven five in December. One investment continues to pay a higher interest rate. Term deposit interest was two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars and realized income in the one investment was a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Again, there were no redemptions or purchases made. As of December thirty-first, the bulk value of the investments in one investment was one million eight hundred nine thousand dollars. There was six point five million dollars invested in term deposits, of which four point one million dollars are in restricted funds for used in water cemetery and the Canada Community Building Fund. And there was two point two million dollars in various bank accounts, of which one point six million dollars were in restricted funds. Not reflected in the, in one investment portfolio is the unrealized change of market value. In twenty twenty-three, the unrealized value was two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Last year, that unrealized value was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. All the investments were made according to the town's investment policy and this is given for information only.
Thank you very much for the reporting. If we have any questions, Mr. Verbal. That's late.
Yeah. So, so I understand the restricted funds around sewer and water. That's always been, you have to put money away for the pipes in the ground. The one point six in restricted funds, is that also sewer and water?
Sewer and water, the uh, cemetery funds and the stuff from um, formerly the gas act, but now called Canada Community Building Fund.
Okay. And that's all for infrastructure related to sewer and water, some joke. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, good. Uh, thank, thank you for that information. I believe we have wastewater uh, treatment plant report, Mr. Harris, please.
Good evening, your worship and council. Um, so you're in front of your report from the wastewater treatment plant, which is a twenty twenty-four. It is a annual report submitted by Northern Waterworks, our current founder and director of sewage treatment plant. Uh, the report has been completely accordance with condition eleven four of the amended departmental compliance approval. Number four, seven, two, one, AG five, J and V issued for to the Corporation of Town Marathon in September twenty-two, two thousand seventeen. Uh, the report covers the period January first, December thirty-first, should read twenty twenty-four. Uh, and is intended to provide a performance record for future references to ensure the ministries made aware of problems that may arise. And to provide a compliance record of the terms and conditions outlined with the ECA. Um, key issues identified from the report that was submitted for twenty twenty-four. Uh, was noted that the report indicated that inoxic zones were not maintained from June to September. This caused an exceedance until the inoxic zones were reestablished. Results have shown these changes to facility operations have been effective in reducing total phosphorus concentrations. Effectiveness of the inoxic zones and irrigation tanks will be, continue to be closely monitored um, throughout twenty twenty-five along with the adjustments, the, the alum dosing and effective waste management strategies. Inoxic zones were not maintained during that period when the plant, when it underwent a significant maintenance cleaning. Uh, Northern Waterworks wanted to test the plant capabilities back to the original design. Um, through that, we realized that we had to continue to induce air into the process. Um, so these results showed that, you know, continual air is required. Uh, we try to reduce that to lower operating costs, but at the end of the day, we need to continue doing that process in order to treat these total phosphorus results. Uh, the effort was to confirm again, like we mentioned, if the plant design could go back to normal operations, but we clearly identified that we cannot. There were no bypasses. There were no overfills, overflows, no spills, no abnormal discharges occurred during that reporting period. Uh, the water quality and the flow monitoring results suggested a successful and adequate sewage treatment program. With the exception of the effluent total phosphorus during the period where the inoxic zones were not maintained. So actually, under normal operating conditions, the Marathon Waste Treatment Plant was uh, able of consistent meeting all other design objectives and compliance limit, limits for all final effluent parameters. Copies are available on the website and here at Comfort of Town Hall. Uh, there's no budget implications. We, we bring these forward on an annual base for the capital, which was just approved. Um, and your administration just presenting this as uh, information purposes only. If there's any questions, I'd take them.
Thank you very much for that report. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Chris?
Yeah. So I'm just trying to remember back to the couple tours I've done of the, of the wastewater system. Is the inox zone where the bugs are, where they're pumping air in?
Yes.
So if you don't pump the air in, there's not enough.
Certain air, so what we're trying to do actually, we're trying to utilize the amount of oxygen because the nitrate ions um, basically to try and pick the oxygen from it. So it then becomes a nitrogen gas, so we can expect, uh, is capable of that way. Certain bugs, depending on the process of the wastewater, needs more oxygen, some don't. So that's where we're gonna do. I don't have all the exact, a hundred percent details. It is a bit of a work part and we did have another tour, uh, booked again, actually with the.
And, but it would have been cheaper had we not had the.
If we could have run it as were for original design, yes.
We tried that. Yeah, didn't work.
Especially was a good time to do it because the, we went to a major plant upgrade on the, you know, cleaning up the entire area. Was all, you know, when it's fresh, let's try it, let's see what happens. But I.
I appreciate, one, you try to save us money.
Yeah, well, exactly. That's right. We're always trying to get money from you.
Thank you. I understand.
Anybody else? Thank you for that report. Up next we have a report on the wait time for station hours and service changes.
Thanks, your worship. Um, just a bit of background on the current waste transfer hours and the service changes we're looking at doing. So currently right now, the waste transfer is open three days per week during the entire year and hazardous wastes is open from mid-May to mid-October. So the waste disposal site is staffed during the hours with three full-time waste attendants. And during the months of hazardous waste operations, the staffing increases before. The tenants are responsible for daily checks on the site, communication needs, directing, uh, directing, directing patrons to correct waste disposal sites based on the refuse, recycling or the hazardous waste materials and accepting payment for waste disposal site services. In addition to the site attendants are also responsible, ensuring that the waste collection bins on the sites are delivered to the landfill and emptied. And that the seasonal activities such as road maintenance and snow rule are completed regularly to ensure user safety. So administration canvases waste operations from surrounding communities. We've been collecting data for the past two years, which consisted of tracking daily, monthly traffic counts, high frequency times for daily, weekly and monthly periods and staffing. Um, by far Marathon's WTS uh, highest months for waste is, is May to October. And the highest frequency times for the traffic is between two and four P M. So based on the results of the canvassing, ninety percent of communities have seasonal hour changes. Uh, the summer begins usually in the first month, May or April, and then winters begin in the month of October, November. The average hours of operations for winter months for the communities canvassed were about sixteen point three hours and for summer about twenty point one hours. Of all the landfill operations, uh, only one employee is there normally to manage the disposal of the sites. Where the town of Marathon, we have a minimum of three um, staff. When we look at all communities for hazardous waste collection, all the communities that I reached out to do one day per year. Marathon currently does sixty-five operating days. So the waste transfer currently operates three days per week and hazardous waste operates are currently right now from mid-May to October. Mounting approximately fourteen hours. So right now, our hours of operation are open from Tuesday two to six, Thursday two to six and Saturdays from ten to four. Um, for the summer hours, administration will be extending the hours of operation of the waste transfer on Saturdays by one hour. Um, so that will now open at nine A M. And we will be reducing the hazardous waste collection from twenty-four weeks to four weeks. We'll be doing two weeks in the spring, two weeks in the fall. So uh, normally sixty-five days, we're going to fall days. The towns are residential hazardous waste is typically picked up by our service collector um, in the late October. So for the winter hours, uh, the administration will be reducing the operation of the waste transfer station by closing on Thursdays. And the Saturday would also go back to the ten to allow time for staff to clear the, you know, the roads and be ready for the tenant lock opening. So the Tuesday would remain the same and we look at those effects. For example, the summer would go May first to October thirty-first, open the Tuesday to Thursday and the Saturday. Same hours, just the earlier in the Saturday. Hazardous waste would go May fifteenth, May thirty-first, September fifteenth to September thirtieth. Giving us both spring and fall collection. And then WTS during the winter operations, which we will look at November first to April thirtieth. Uh, would be open Tuesday two to six, Thursday would be closed and Saturday ten to four. Uh, the new hours of operation would take effects, uh, take effect May first and will advertise locally in the paper. Uh, and through the town's website and social other, social media platforms. Just also a bit of mind or two, we've been auditing the town in regards to our curbside pickup. And, you know, we are seeing a lot less curbside pickup where we encourage, we have staff going around, we encourage curbside pickup. So we are seeing a decrease in that. I'd say over half our residents do not do curbside pickup.
Do you think there's one of those waste transition centers?
Yeah. So I think, uh, you know, us closing, we'll, we'll see a change in that, but that's fine. We already have the manpower, the equipment going by the streets already to do the pickup. So on a financial implication, you know, we see a reduction in, in the operating of the, the facility where we transfer those days to other areas and, you know, reducing hazardous waste in both that tiny grid will allow us to optimize staff and equipment in different areas, resources. So this report is being brought forward for information. So I'll let you know what's moving forward. Be the first.
Any questions? Thank you for that. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Chris?
You know, I would just say I'd be a strong advocate for the maintenance of the roadside pickup only because we've just, in the last year or two, really have figured out the bear situation. So I would hate to slowly move away from any type of operation in that format and then see an issue kind of re persist when it comes to wildlife and stuff like that. So uh, yeah, just my one ultimate comment.
That's late.
Yeah, I can see, uh, again, that those make sense. Open more when you're busy, less when you're close. Uh, the one thing I didn't see, did we reduce the number of, it said that lots of the other waste transfer stations work with one or two employees, were three or four.
Yep.
Will the change of not having.
Hazardous will.
Would go down to two or?
No, we're still, we're still gonna see three and four just for those specific periods.
Okay.
So instead of having, um, you know, right now we'll be going down also for weeks, or we'll have four for four weeks. And then after that, we take our staff and do road repairs, other repairs, and freezer to do a.
Absolutely.
Especially also, you know, staff, our summer is very short. So all of a sudden your hours are very limited to what you can do with your resources. So those will be needed for that.
Okay. Appreciate that you did the data to.
Yeah, we, we did do a lot of data on it. So it's just not something we just pull out of the hat and say, here's what we're gonna do.
So, so one big important thing, and I'm sure you're gonna work with them and you probably already have, uh, have discussions with the contractors, because even in winter, there is contracting and construction work being done. So then those individuals can come and work around yourself with delivering directly to the landfill site, which you already have in place with a lot of contractors, just so there's nobody saying, I got a trailer full of household material that I can't dump until Saturday and I can't get my work done. So you're gonna work with those.
That's correct. We currently do that right now.
Yeah.
Um, most of those type of uh, activities are automatically going right and left.
Right.
So any of the contractors that don't dump trailer, the last thing we want them is going to WTS dumping in a bin. Now I gotta take that bin home again. And so we already worked that internally and even that, our hours there, we don't keep them as we used to. Just because the demand is there, they have our number, we make arrangements ahead of time and it will be go.
And then just make sure when you put that out there for a change of hours, that's on there that any contractor is willing to work with them as well. Please reach out.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can.
Because they go on Thursday, oh, but I can't dump my trailer. Well, we can arrange work with you, right? I think.
Absolutely. We can make sure.
You give them the treasure.
That, Council Julian.
First of three people is because we have one at recycling, one at the weigh scale and one at the unloading area, right?
So yeah, again, you have recycling, you have hazardous waste, scale and one up on top.
And, and those are some of the services that aren't offered by those other communities, I assume.
No, it's, it's the dynamics of our operation. So if we said we're no longer gonna operate WTS in town.
Yeah.
And we're only gonna operate at the landfill, that's where we would see reduction.
Yeah.
But in our, it's gonna change. I'm gonna be honest, as all these other communities are changing their landfill process, they're gonna fall into the same category.
I think, I think we're a bit ahead of the curve.
We are. Yeah.
The, the question though for me is, why do people prefer to bring their stuff to, to the depot as opposed to put out of the street? Like, what's the advantage?
I think it's a beast. Um, you know, it's anywhere within town is four kilometers. I can guarantee if you lived anywhere else in your landfill was maybe twenty or fifteen kilometers away, we would see a higher curbside.
I never have enough garbage to make it worth the number of tags they have to pay to drive across the scale. So I don't like.
It's a Saturday date.
Oh, I see. Okay, I'll be down to your place. Okay, so it's a bunch of people go.
Thank you. To that point, we're there and I know through um, tracking and all that. And I don't know the total operations of it all, but maybe a later start to the curbside pickup. Cause for me, that's the big thing. If I'm not out by six thirty, it's by like seven, seven oh five, it's come, it's gone and I've missed it for, so speaking for myself, I'm still in bed with the truck at five. So.
Yeah, so, so.
You're a Gen Z?
Short answer is no, for two reasons. One, our collective agreement, right, dictates the hours of work.
Right.
Okay.
Right? And for us to be efficient with the hours of work and the collective agreement, we have to have that stuff.
And our crew starts at seven, so they're not getting your house seven oh five. The people are seven thirty. So can you get, that's the game garbage out there, sir.
On a Saturday, on a Saturday.
They don't come on Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm.
Anyway, all good. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Chris? It's a change and change is gonna give a headache and everybody's gonna get upset. It's reality. We're trying to save, save dollars. Put that employee, that third employee, the fourth employee out to work elsewhere in the municipality. So it's just, it's good. It's just change.
We're not, we're never gonna deny it. If someone showed up unexpectedly, they were, you know, cleaning a house out for someone else from out of town and showed up with some hazardous. You know what? We already have someone there you may have to wait. You know, but we will get to, you want, we're not gonna deter that, you know, because the whole thing is we don't want this stuff going into our landfill anyway. We sort of wanna be a bit mindful of that, but again, having those two employees and they're right beside each other, it'll slow that down.
But the nature of the beast was because we only did the one day in the original before the trap station opened and we went to the full-time summer actual.
I remember.
One day.
Yep.
So anyway, thank you very much for the report. Appreciate it.
I won't open that.
Up next we have a report on the seasonal opening dates.
Yeah. So attached, you see some dates that we're targeting. Uh, we're a bit behind with uh, Mother Nature extending her, her winter. Uh, but Pebble Beach, uh, we'll have the playground, everything there may the ninth. And Lake, uh, we will be opening a little bit earlier to May sixteenth, but for sure, May sixteen, we'll hit targets with the Comfort Station. Um, Garden Cove, May ninth, Dyers Park, uh, we originally were looking at June sixth, but we've now got the tournament scheduled for um, the end of May, so we'll be pushing that up a little bit to make sure we get the tournament in for the uh, for that program. The boat landing, uh, the main docks will be going in, uh, fish cleaning station for May the ninth. Uh, just being, you know, whereas we talk in budget, that there will be no slips. Um, just because of the cost of repairing them and the damage they get every year. Delaro will be open May by May sixteenth, the outdoor rink and the basketball. Delro will be open May by May sixteenth, the outdoor rink and the basketball, May second. Um, golf course right now, we're looking at a tentative date of May sixteenth. Um, being mindful, you know, we're hoping greens will be ready, but if greens aren't ready, we will be walking on the course. We'll have pins ahead that people can just play basically in the rocks. So that's what we're looking at. The practice range, uh, June twenty-sixth is the target to have that completed. And the tennis courts and the pickleball, June sixth. Any questions with the dates? We'll, they get out, if it comes open, open, it's open earlier, but guaranteed that these things will be targeted.
Just one quick question. All this goal, uh, live through the communications manager on social media and stuff, so everyone's aware.
Yeah, we, we literally talk day to day.
Yeah.
Right? We keep an eye on the weather. As you can see, we're not getting above five degrees this week. We need to be about fifteen degrees at the golf course right now.
The rain's helping a bit, but you do.
I'm sure it's, the tides are still on now.
I've been getting a lot of questions about Penn Lake and the swings and stuff like that. So more so.
So again, effective surfacing zones. So we got to get sand in there. We got to rototill. So we got to make sure that the compaction is not there. So now we've got to get our staff on that.
And then the playground will include the, uh, all, all nets of the.
Just, your worship, good description. Just for education, like that's a great question, right? How come the swings aren't up? Because they're still frosted in the ground. We actually have a certified inspector on staff that does that compaction testing. So if it doesn't pass that testing, we cannot put the swings up. So once we're able to do that, then the swings go up.
Uh, so one thing we, we tried to go last year, the golf course has been a bit of a nemesis and has been ongoing over the years is about monitoring walk-ons. And, uh, we're going to look at changing that up to show we have more of a sign-in process and monitoring the individuals that because it, it, we all know we live in a small community and people walking on our golf course and going around the golf and, uh, they're not intimidating, but because we have young staff, they could use the intimidated staff. So it's easier to have a policy driven by council that's administered through the organization, through the staff.
Yeah. So I don't want to give a lot of information, you know, as per, because we have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, administratively, uh, there will be a number of changes maybe this year in terms of not only monitoring that, uh, not just for course etiquette and pace of play, but lost revenues.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, much stricter enforcement policy if you don't follow the rules. So we'll be posting all of that, uh, working with our men's and juniors, seniors clubs, uh, Ms. Watson, Lea, and information.
Okay.
And, uh, the public will.
And I'm, I'm very glad to hear that because we've had some individuals, specifically adults, boomer adults that have, that have literally abused their staff verbally. So if there's a clear policy on the, the, the punishments of those individuals for doing that, then there is very clear. Right? Just no maybe yay, yay guessing. It's done. Here's the policy. If you verbally abuse a staff because you don't like something in regards to your time slot has been moved or you couldn't get that time at ten, ten, when you got all day because you're retired, like, you know what I mean? And I'm going to use that in general, but that's, that happens and we know it's happened.
Respectful.
I have a follow-up to the mayor's point. Uh, you know, some of the, you know, you have to sign a contract now when you purchase your membership. It is a result of these incidents that staff faced last year, which will not happen.
No, it shouldn't, should never happen, right? So, yeah, it is.
Protect our staff.
So I'm glad to hear that you're looking at all that. That's just about protecting our staff more than anything. It's about having a clear policy. Policy is very clear, right? There it is. There's no arguing, right? You buy your membership, cure your policy.
And only if you look at surveillance systems, you know, we never had one five years.
Yep.
Your facilities.
Yeah, you gotta do that.
Work your own violence and freedom, please, as anyone in matrix.
Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for the updates. Up next, I have a report on the following check registers for March twenty twenty-five. Council's billed the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, six point cents. A period of amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-two cents. Move by. That's like, any questions on those check runs? There are no poll question on the favor. Eric, thank you very much. Couple bylaws, uh, one bylaw in regards to, you want to highlight that bylaw? Thank you, Mr. Chris.
Yeah. So we're looking at, uh, bylaw two, uh, twenty ninety-nine, uh, which is, uh, open air burning in the town of Marathon. Making one small change to the bylaw just to make it more resident friendly. Traditionally, you were able to have the fire two hours after sunset.
Before sunset.
Uh, which in our case might mean sometimes it's nine o'clock at night. So what we've done now is we've gone to making it six P M. So that you can get outside, enjoy the summer, the fall weather and have a fire, uh, within the bylaw.
And, and thank you for that. I'm glad you said we're trying to enhance the, the public's pleasure. Because it is, right? It's what it's supposed, recognize what people are saying. It's about getting their kids out and having marshmallows at six or seven o'clock and they run at nine, three, ten o'clock. With that being said, we also need to encourage you to get your license for the fire pit back here so that you're a registered fire pit operator. So we'll be, uh, we'll be working on that in education, council balance.
Permits, did they open in a window or are you able to purchase your permit three hundred and sixty-five days a year?
You can get it at town hall, uh, or you can get it online, which is easy. Yes. You gotta pay for housing.
Awesome. Okay, perfect.
One key important, important part of that obviously is we know and everybody's very familiar with that. We just heard from, I know the insurance ratios with the, you know, climate change. Permits are void if there's a fire ban. We've had people in the past who burned fires in the backyard because they think it's a backyard fire. It's not going to affect a fire ban. A fire ban is a fire ban, a fire ban, period. So just want to remind people that that'll be part of your purchase when you get your fire permit as well. It's right here. So identify very clearly that there's a fire ban, you don't burn. With that being said, I have bylaw number two nine nine, two zero nine nine, sorry, being a bylaw to repeal by law number fourteen sixty-three, being a bylaw for prevention of fires and prevent open air burning within the town of Marathon to be ready for a second or third time, finally passes twenty eighth day of April twenty twenty-five. Move by. I'm sure you have a question.
I, I.
Let me get the motion on the floor. Move by. That's Julia. Say bye, council members. Good, council lead.
Uh, I, I just think about the, the one exception that I can think of this and, and the town's been good enough for when we, we do the powwow and I just know there's more and more indigenous folks, uh, in town. But if you're doing a, a fire for the Chibai ceremony or for the powwow, what would the process be to get a permit that allows you to burn?
So it's a, it's a written request to the C O, no different than a road closure, which the C O would then grant for a specific period of time for a specific event.
Thanks. I think that process is important in this is we get more.
Anybody else? Good. All in favor? Terry, thank you. Bylaw number twenty-one hundred, being a bylaw to adopt the estimates, the sums required during the year twenty twenty-five to be ready for a second or third time, finally passes twenty-eighth day of April twenty twenty-five. This is for the budget for the town of Marathon. Move by. That's like, any questions of that budget? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All in favor? Eric, thank you. And prior to adjournment, uh, we will be going into an encamberment and discuss various items this evening. One will be plans for or in instructions and negotiations and two will be labor relations and employee negotiations. Thank you very much. I adjourn at the hour of five seventeen P M. Move by, council legs and by council unit. Thank you and have a good night.